Good evening and welcome to our January Smyrna Town Council meeting. Before we move into our meeting agenda, we do have two citizens on for citizens comments. Our first one is Leanne Riley. And if you will come forward and state your name, your address, and then you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Leanne Riley, 119 Bonifay Drive. I'm coming pertaining to our main entrance being finished in Hidden Hills. We've been waiting 17 years. And John Antorsia told me that when Enon Springs West was finished, that the main entrance to Hidden Hills would be done. Well, it's not. As you can see, if you look at each one of these, it shows each one that it is supposed to be done. And two of them show that it's supposed to be complete. And also on GPS, it shows Bonifay Drive is a road. I mean, St. Francis is finished. And everybody that comes over goes to that entrance. It's not finished. They complain. I have people that come from that direction, from like the school direction, and they have to go all the way around and come back in and then come back. And it's a little bit ridiculous. Like tonight, when I left to come and I had to come Cedar Forest, it took forever to get out because of the traffic. And you just sit and you wait and you wait, and then you have to hope somebody doesn't hit you. But we were told this would be done. Like I said, John said that it would be done. And he's not with us anymore, but he was a man of his word. He was also, he was the main builder, but also one of the developers. I think at one time, he may have been over all of it. I'm not sure. But there's safety reasons, there's all kinds of reasons that this road needs to be finished. So it's just fire, everything. And I don't think it's fair to us in Hidden Hills to not have our main entrance when the other three have their main entrance. So, and it's ridiculous to have to go all the way around when all you'd have to do is just go down St. Francis and turn left or right onto Enon Springs. And it's two years. One of these was signed, it's hard for me to see, I think 2020? And shows that it's complete. And this is 2023. So I don't, we would like to know why, if y'all know why it hasn't been done.
Three minutes, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer Irvin? If you will state for the record, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Irvin. I live at 117 Bonifay Drive.
Okay.
I'm here for the same reasons. We are neighbors. We live on the same street. And I have a daughter at Rocky Fork Middle now, so we were there when it got built. We moved in 2016. At that time, they had a road that, it was a little private road at the end of St. Francis, and it dropped out at the time at Rocky Fork Road. We would take that to go in and out of the school, and they closed it off and put a house there. And so we were like, okay, you know, great, we're gonna, got another house, whatever, they're gonna open it up. And you can see, there's two houses at the end of, at the end of St. Francis, it stops there. And I'm Bonifay, so I kind of ended there. But it just stops, and you can see, I think we pulled up, it's like 90 yards, it has to be finished. But it, you know, my daughter was in sports this summer, so I was constantly having to go back, and I'd have to go all the way around. It takes forever. It takes about eight, eight minutes to get out from my house all the way around. And if I were to be able to just go through, it would be two, about two minutes to get over. So it, I mean, it would definitely be convenient for not only me, but anybody that has kids that are, you know, at the school. I could actually take my daughter to school instead of being bussed. But it takes me in the morning, the other day I took her, it took me almost 45 minutes to go from my house all the way around through the school line, which is pretty bad right now, too. They're working on that. And then back home, so it took about 45 minutes. So that's a little frustrating for me, especially if I need to get to her quickly, I can't. Buses in the morning, I think it would be great for the buses, the bus route, come in right there. We have all those homes there. I think it would be really beneficial to open that street up for not only me, but the buses, the neighbors, fire, and police officers. I had to, I had to unfortunately call the police department one day and come up and actually try to help my neighbor. But, so I'm out there, and it was about, and they tried to get there as fast as they could. It was about 10 minutes. And they get there as fast as they could, and actually, a police officer, he lives in my neighborhood. He wasn't, he was on duty, but, you know, he was like, oh, it'd be so nice, I could just get, I would have been able to get here so much faster. And everything was fine, thank God. But what if it wasn't? You know, that, those few minutes make all the difference to me, maybe a neighbor that needs help, anybody. I just think that if they can get to us quicker, Enon Springs right there, the police department's right there, they could just get in if they need to. The other thing, the other thing that's a main concern to me is workers, you know, trying to get out. I work, I work in the healthcare industry. I can't, if there's, I guess the main thing is, when it ices over, it is really hard to get out of my neighborhood. I can't even get out, going through the whole neighborhood. They, you know, my neighborhood's really hilly, so going over, they put some speed bumps in, and I can't get over.
Three minutes, Mayor.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you all coming to speak with us today. And Brian, I know that you and I talked about that they were going to be on the agenda, and just to give all of us some education on, tell us the process and where things are. And she says that it's been 17 years, so can you talk a little bit about the road and where things have been?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm happy to share with you. And the, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but the lady that spoke about the road that's on the agenda up here at the top that comes out.
Okay, wait, let me get our bearings. So this is Rocky Fork?
So if you look kind of in the center, yeah, that's Rocky, well, Enon Springs had not been built, so you got Rocky Fork, and you see kind of that pink line in the middle that goes back into the development. That was actually a construction entrance, it was never designated as a road. And what's happened is, is that where it comes into Bonifay up there, that last lot that was being used for the construction entrance, the house has been built on that, so that cut that off. Then when you add to it, when we developed Enon Springs Road and built that road, that construction entrance was taken away. It was never a qualified road. I think it got used as a road by many of the residents, but it was, it was never a perceived road.
At a construction entrance by the developer, not by the town?
It was a temporary entrance.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Okay.
So then we get into the effects of the entrance to the subdivision. Again, this subdivision, Mr. Antorsia and several other partners, they brought us in a master plat. This plat is absolutely correct, but it is the developer's responsibility to build those roads and attach to our public streets. So what has happened is, the development has come full force to this point. When Enon Springs was built, we talked to the developer about completing his section of the road and tying it in at the same time we built the road. He chose not to do that, because as you remember, Enon Springs Road, when it went in, also we put an overlay on that property, so that really is now commercial frontage. So he did not want to make, my understanding, and I'm speaking only from what he told us, based on not knowing what he would sell the property for, he wanted to hold that road out until he got alignment of his buildings. He has since brought another plat that shows the road, it stays the same. But the end result is, it's still part of his development, and it's the developer's responsibility to build that road. We've looked at it.
At their cost?
At their cost.
So if the town went in and did it, it would be taxpayer dollars having to go in to build the road as opposed to the developer?
That's correct. And we don't do that in any other development.
Okay.
It's the developer's responsibility to build the road to the public street. That's kind of the stalemate we're at. From the standpoint of safety, we looked at that as well. There are four entrances to the development, three off of Old Nashville Highway, one off of Rocky Springs, Rock Springs Road. And we'll talk about this a little later tonight in our meeting, but we've just completed a safety audit through the ISO rating, and our ISO rating is achievable for us to beat within the timeframes to provide safety services to all the residents, not only in this development, but across the town. So, you know, while it would be convenient, we fully understand that, but this is a situation where the developer has a responsibility to build the road, it's not the town's responsibility to build that road.
Okay. Council, any questions or comments? And let me say this, I totally understand the homeowner's frustration in regards to being able to, looks like pretty much look out and see that road and just know how close it is to get there. But I think we also have, as a council and as a town, have a responsibility to citizens to make sure that we're not setting a precedence of, you all may want this, but what happens when another neighborhood wants the same thing? Should all of the taxpayers have to pay for something that a developer should have to pay for? With...
One other caveat that I will share, because the school situation came up, and these schools have been an issue for us, from a safety standard, just to the schools themselves. We are completing a section of Spring Hill Drive. It's under construction, they're actually clearing right now, that will give access to the schools through the development. You'll be able to come the back way in and get to the schools, because there was no secondary entrance to the schools, and that's with not one, but two schools back there right now in the developments around it. With the traffic patterns, we felt it was important that if we did have something catastrophic at those schools, we needed to make sure we could get emergency services into those. So we are building a secondary road on Spring Hill that will allow you to get into the schools.
Okay. Anything, any other?
Brian, it's probably hindsight 2020 on this, but should that road have ever been bonded as part of the completion of the development?
You know, I can't really speak to that. This development came in before my time.
Long time.
You know, I would hate to say one way or the other. I mean, typically, like I said, the developers are building, and the problem is, is we're down to that final stage, and, you know, you can see the end mark here, and everybody wants it, but it is actually a developer's responsibility to build that road.
Well, and I even had questions, had discussion with Brian, is, you know, if these homeowners wanted it, could they go in and we do some sort of special assessment district where they had to pay for the road if they wanted that? And I think you figured out, it was about $300,000, and they couldn't do that.
It's about $300,000 by the time you do the utilities and the actual building of the road, because it's not just going out there and pouring asphalt, you've got to develop the base and build the road. So somewhere between $275,000 to $300,000. The problem with doing a special assessment is it's a public road. About the only way you could do that is like with a toll road, and I don't think we want to put a 90-foot toll road in Smyrna, so.
Absolutely.
It's just a tough situation. I mean...
Well, another thing is, how is that commercial going to develop on the front? It might not develop exactly how, how they think it might right now. So, okay, council, anything else? We hope that we've answered your questions. I know it may not be to the degree in which you had hoped that it might be, but I hope you all understand kind of the rock and a hard place we're also in as well. So, but we appreciate you bringing your concerns, and hopefully with the development that's happening out that way, there'll be somebody that'll want to purchase that property and want to develop it soon. So. Okay, we, I will call our meeting to order. Tonight, Chaplain, did I see Tim here? Is, Tim, oh, there you are, Tim, I didn't see you back there in the back. Chaplain, Tim York from the Smyrna Police Department will do our prayer and our pledge tonight. It's going to be done by Jeffrey L. Peach, our town attorney. If you'll all stand with us, please.
Let's pray. Our Father, we're grateful for this new year, we're thankful for our city. We ask you to bless those who guide our city, that you will give them wisdom. We pray for all those who serve our city. We pray for those who serve in emergency services. We lift them up, pray for protection, pray for your leadership in everything they do. Father, we pray for your guidance as a community. Help us to love one another, help us to guide each other, and strengthen each other. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chaplain. Thanks, Jeff. Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call.
I will. Councilwoman Peoples?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell?
Present.
Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mayor Reed?
Here.
Move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the December 6, 2022 regular meeting and the December 22, 2022 special called and work session meeting of the town council. Jeff, are these in order?
In order as to form, Mayor.
Council, is there any additions or corrections that need to be made to the minutes?
I didn't see any, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve? Do we have a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Brian or Amber, any correspondence, communications, awards, or recognitions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We'll move on to item six, which is our consent agenda, and these are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine matters, that we can vote on as a group, as opposed to having to vote on them individually. If there is an item that a council member has questions or wants to pull off and discuss individually, we can do that. I do like to read each item so that those here in the audience and those at home know exactly what we are voting on. So if you will be patient with me, we've got quite a few tonight. Our first one is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a new operating protocol with Paul Corporation for the membrane filtration system at the water treatment plant. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal for the 24/7 telephone technical support with Paul Corporation for the membrane filtration process at the water treatment plant. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with Thomas &amp; Hutton for the Olive Branch CEI Services. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the state revolving loan application authorizing resolution for an increase in loan amount for the INI project. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the Capital Project contract with Charlie Erwin Painting LLC relative to the water treatment plant valve and raw water intake pipe painting. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease renewal with the U.S. Corps of Engineers for Sharp Springs Park. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Science Center for the rental of the From Here to There exhibit at the Smerna Outdoor Adventure Center. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with the Betty Bren Museum for the Sum Assembly Required Exhibit. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a three-year renewal agreement with the CDWG for the town's Google Workspace Licensing. Item J is consideration and authorization for, of a lease of items to be auctioned through online surplus sale with GovDeals. And our last one, item K, is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Duncan &amp; Associates to complete an update on the Town of Smyrna Impact Fee Study. Council, any questions or an item you'd like to pull off and discuss individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now move on to old business, which is rare. There is no old business items to be considered at this time. So we'll now move on to new business. We have five items to consider under our planning commission report. Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property on Tax Map 28, parcel 103.01, to go from R3 to PRD. It's requested by Chandler Walker. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 42.87 acres and is located on Williams Port Drive. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This first request is for property located kind of at the end of Williams Port Drive, it's west of Old Nashville Highway, south of Rock Springs Road. Williams Port Drive is stubbed into the property in two locations, and Bonifay Drive and High Ridge Drive are also stubbed into it. Land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is R3. This proposed PRD is for 44 single-family lots and 54 townhomes. Williams Port Drive would be extended through the project. The other two stubbed streets would also be extended. Houses would range from 2,000 to 3,500 square feet. Townhomes would be 1,850 to 2,250 square feet. All homes would be finished with a mix of brick, stone, and concrete siding. The single-family homes would be set back at least 20 feet, but the garage would be set back at least 35. And because of some significant topo on this property, sprinkler systems may be required based on fire flow and the total square footage of the proposed residences that would be under roof. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend denial. Staff had also recommended, recommend denial.
Okay. Mark or Tim, anything that you want to add to this?
We had about a 30-minute conversation with planning commission on this, and we saw that what Mr. Speer was wanting to build was quite attractive, it was a nice property. But we also saw that everything surrounding it was all R3, and we just felt like from a zoning perspective, it'd be more consistent if we left at R3. Yeah, it was just the proper zoning fit for that subdivision. It's all established, we heard from some neighbors there, and both had good points. But in the end, I think proper zoning for that subdivision would be to remain it as R3.
Council, any questions or comments?
Well, I, and I saw the project a long time ago, basically from about a year ago, I guess, or so, maybe a little after that, and was pretty excited about it. I know I watched the planning commission meeting, and I saw the, you know, the group that was not for it, and I know the planning commission was not either. I looked at it and also looked at the development with the developer, and personally thought it's a very, very nice development. I know we try to stay consistent, and I know R3s are around there. Sometimes, in my, again, my opinion, sometimes we can do better. And when I look at this, and I see the types of homes that were going to be built there versus what can be built there under the current zoning, I got pretty excited about it. And I may be out there by myself on that, but I just, I felt it was, I feel like it's a good project. Kevin, I was kind of wanted to ask you, I knew from, you know, what planning was saying, why they didn't really like it. I wasn't quite sure. I didn't hear what, what staff was, what was their reasoning?
Well, I agree with you. I think this, I think this is actually a nice proposed development. I just don't think this is the right place for it. I think, I think from a consistency with, in an established neighborhood, I felt like it would be better served to be, if it wasn't in an established neighborhood first, and then also typically, you know, townhomes are multifamily in general, you typically have a little bit more frontage or access to more of a major street, like we have some along Old Nashville Highway, or along Enon Springs Road, or those kind of areas. And so that's why, that's why we felt, the way we felt.
And I, I get it, I understand, you know, where people are coming from on it. And I kind of put myself in their shoes, and I have property behind my house that doesn't have anything either. And it's like, you know, I wouldn't like for anything to be back there. I'd love to, for it to be like that. But if I had to put something, if I knew something was coming back there, and I had the choice and the opportunity for it to be something that was going to be 28 to 35 hundred square foot homes versus possibility of 18 to 24, 25, for me, I think my property value would be better served if it was something on the nicer end. So again, I may be in the minority, probably am, but that's just kind of my opinion on it.
Jerry, I hear what you're saying. And I would add, when we looked at it from the planning commission, we're looking at a neighborhood here that is 40-plus years old, and it's developed over that time, and each and every time that it, a parcel has been brought in, it's been developed consistent with what's there in that neighborhood. And to me, the word is consistent, and we try to do that. When you look at the comprehensive plan, for instance, and we talk about, you know, where we place towns and, and single family, and you move from density, as you move from a roadway, you know, you go typically from a higher density to a lower density. And we've taken this in the middle of, again, a well-established R3, and we're increasing the density. Now, there's nothing that will preclude this developer from developing like homes as to what surrounds it. And certainly, you do, you do have some opportunity to be more specific as far as what materials are done, but because it's R3, again, it doesn't mean that the developer has to build anything that's inferior to what's already established in this neighborhood. And quite frankly, I'd be very surprised if they did that, and actually very not, you know, very much not happy if that were the instance.
Hey, Jerry, and you also, and I know what you meant when you said this. You said the planning commission didn't like it. No, we liked it. We just couldn't support it. So there's a difference. I like what Mr. Speer brought. If I, if I were the neighbor that lived behind the $750,000 homes, that'd be great. If I'm the neighbor that lives down behind those townhomes, and they set up high and look down at my yard, not so great. So the fit, that's the only reason I kind of went in the direction I did, is the fit of that zoning and the product. Product is great, and the development's great. But I think we're just trying to stay consistent with what's wrapped all around it and has been there for 20-plus years. So that's why.
Yeah, I think you guys, I think you hit it right on the head. Many times over the last, I know, six years, for sure, there's been projects that have come forward that were either multifamily in a residential area, or commercial adjacent to a residential area, and we have consistently denied those requests when they did not fit with the surrounding zoning. And I think this kind of goes in that same vein. These condos, townhomes, right in the middle of an R3 subdivision, and I mean, these are, I think this would even be different if these condos or townhomes were on Old Nashville Highway or on Rock Springs Road at the outside of the subdivision, but being nestled right in the middle, it just doesn't really fit. Now, I spoke to several homeowners, and it's interesting, you mentioned, I spoke to a homeowner who would back up to the condos, and he was actually for this project, because he said the same things we said. It's a nice project, it probably would help their home values, and that it's a better option than probably full of lower-end R3 that could go in there, right? So, but he also stated that he felt like he was probably the minority of the neighborhood group that has been very vocal about this project. And that's kind of where I'm falling, is it's a little bit of a struggle for me. I think if I lived there and I was adjacent to this, I probably would support this project. But I feel like that we're put here to represent our constituents, and what we've heard is that the majority of the neighbors that it affects doesn't want it. And so that's the way I feel I have to vote, because that's what they're asking us to do. do. And even though I may personally have a different opinion, I'm being asked by my constituents to not support it, and that's what they want.
I'm having the same struggle, I guess, I would say, because I believe it is a, it is a good product. But the location or the fit is the concern that I'm having as well, and it's, like you said, a majority of the citizens that live in that area have issues with it. And so we have to be concerned, or we have to kind of support what it is that they're looking or wanting in that area. Jerry, I agree with you as well, as far as an increase in property values probably, depending on what part of the development you're in. So I'm like you, I was struggling with that, but I also feel like Steve, that we need to, that I have a responsibility to the citizens as far as what it is that they're looking to have there. And one of the things that you said, Mark, in the Planning Commission meeting is, this is an R3 area, and there are certain types of materials that can be used there. So be careful what you ask for or what you, what you wish, because if it does stay in R3, we don't have as much control as, as to the materials as we would as a PRD. So there are some issues on both sides, so.
And tagging on to what you said, Kevin, I'm going to ask you, if this is denied as Planning Commission asked, just so those homeowners understand what an R3 zoning means, can you go over that so they know what this developer is allowed to do in that area?
Sure. R3 is a single-family-only zone, 10,000 square feet is the minimum lot size.
Which is similar to what they already have?
Just very similar to what's all around it. That's just the minimum lot size. Certainly, you could have bigger lots. There are no requirements on that as far as house size, house materials, anything like that. So certainly, by zoning, some would could build, 1,000-square-foot vinyl siding house, no garage, gravel driveway. I mean, I mean.
With no amenities?
With no amenities of any kind, anything like that.
No green space.
So the only green space you would have, or would be required to have in R3 is you would have your common areas that are used for detention. That would really be it. So, so certainly that is, could happen there, whether this owner or any future owner. So I think realistically, that's going to be tough, just because the cost to develop the property is, the lots are going to cost to be able to make money. You're going to have to have something a little, a nicer product than what I just described, certainly. But by zoning, that would be the case, certainly.
And would be out of our control as a town.
Be completely out of our control.
Right. I just want to make sure that there's no, there's no questions left unanswered in regards to what could or couldn't happen with the property if it's left as it is, so.
Well, as you recall, I think Planning Commission at least will recall this. This is about the third or fourth time we've seen this be requested for PRD zoning, and every time, because of what was involved in that PRD, we turned it down. So in staying consistent, we could have accepted something before somewhat similar, and we turned those people down. So I'm just trying to stay consistent. I will say this, and I said this in the meeting, I think, I'm looking. There he is. Caleb's here. I said this in the meeting the other night at the Planning Commission. That guy builds a really nice home. He has beautiful product. And this would be, this would not be an eyesore. This would be a plus if it were anywhere else. One of the things I also said was, as new development comes in, let's take the west side of town, we're seeing a lot of growth out that way. We're also seeing developments with the mixed use coming in. Those are coming in, but nothing around it is unsimilar. Everything around it is similar. This is just the only thing even near there, is the PRD and Sims Ridge, that has not even developed yet. But if you look at that map, it's all R3. The R1 was brought up in the meeting the other night, and what a lot of people might not understand is all green grass was, initially, when we adopted zoning, we zoned everything R1 until it got ready to grow. And then typically, R3 became the common denominator. So you're still seeing some of that left in the R1 district. But that's a larger lot that would, if they ever do develop it, it'll probably more than likely come in as R3 as well. I do want to give kudos to Caleb. I think for you guys to go to the red bicycle, call a community meeting like I asked you to do, you heard a lot of pros and cons from your neighbors over there. And then we had some people get up and speak. You spoke for it. We had some people get up and speak against it. And what we heard was, a large number of people there would have preferred to leave it parallel to what they already have around them. Whether that builds your property value up or not is, is a good question, but here's what it won't do, it shouldn't hurt it, even with R3, because it's going to be similar product. That's all I got.
You know, something that comes to my mind in looking at this, one of the first terms I learned when I got off the council, when we started dealing with zoning and such as that, was spot zoning. And, you know, there are, there are instances across town where the PRD comes in, and it gets shady with the, whether it's spot zoning or not, because, you know, there's, there's some overlap there. But with this being completely in the middle of the R3, to me, it's a pretty well a prime example of it. But first thing I looked at was, if I lived in this neighborhood of completely R3 houses, would I want these put right in the middle of it? And, and the answer to that was no also. And like everybody has mentioned, you know, look over the project, and it does look like a terrific project. I mean, you know, I love the green space that's, that's being saved in it. I think that's a, you know, such a major plus to it. But, you know, it's, and of course, getting down to the bottom of it all, it's a very tough piece of property. And of course, you, you know, you look over there to the left there, that other R1 is going to be a tough piece of property also. You know, the elevations are so great that you just can't go out there and pop houses up there. The development costs are going to be astronomical, and, and understanding that it is going to be hard to turn a profit on these pieces of property, not just that one, but, but the other ones also. And it takes a lot of forethought in how to get that done. And that's all I've got.
So we don't normally do this, but we were asked by the developer if he could address this body since it was denied at planning, and since it's not normally something that we do, how does this body feel about allowing that?
I know Tim and I probably heard a lot from Caleb the other night. If the others want to, that's on them, but I think we understand where he's coming from.
Other counsel?
I have no opinion. I don't have any issue either way.
Jerry, no comment?
Yeah.
You all good?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we will suspend the rules and allow you to speak, if you'd like to speak. If you will come forward and state your name and address, and you can address this body.
Thanks. Caleb Speer, 103 Maple. Can I hand y'all these, piece of paper?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to get up here and speak. Clearly, this is a project that's near and dear to my heart, as I am a local in Smyrna, and Smyrna is near and dear to my heart. It's where I feel like the Lord has intentionally put me. I'm pouring a lot of time and money into the city, especially the Depot District, and this is something else that I would love to partner with Smyrna and bring here. What I put in front of you is a proposed R3 development that we would look at doing should this not get approved. And a lot of, and I'm going to ask the council to forgive me, I'm going to be very respectful, but I'm also going to be bold here because this is something that we've worked together on with several of the council and the community a lot in this process, because the community did speak up, and we were able to resolve a lot of the community's issues that they had here. And that is why this is, I'm very passionate about getting this passed. One of the things that's huge for me is, we've talked about caring about our constituents and caring about this as a whole and remaining a constant product throughout this. What you're looking at in front of you is 98 lots. I see, sorry, Jerry, I should have put that on there. There's 98 lots there. Every single one of those lots is 10,000 square feet. Every single one of those lots backs up to the border of our property, and every single one of those lots would be clear-cut of all the trees. All the green space that we have in this place would end up being pretty much clear-cut for the infrastructure purposes. The project that you're looking at in front of you would be around a five- to six-year project that would have extensive blasting, extensive hammering, lots of utilities to be put in, lots of construction traffic that would be coming in and out of there. And I, you know, the Planning Commission hinted at the fact that there is a little bit of a threat in the tone of my voice, and that is not my intention at all to put this. My intention is to show the council that there's two realities here. One is I can do this right here that I don't want to do. Very do not want to do this product. This is not a product that I enjoy building, and this is not a project that I would enjoy building. But in the end of the day, in order for me to continue to be having the impact that I'm going to have on the Smyrna for the positive, I have to do something with this land in order to come out of this making some money. So this project right here would be around a two-and-a-half-year project. The infrastructure would be much less costly. The impact to the surrounding citizens would be much less costly. The product, as Jerry hinted at, the product that we'll be putting in there would be a much higher-end product. One of the things, the biggest, the two biggest, three biggest issues that the community raised was the fact that the townhomes are three stories. They didn't fit in with the aesthetics, and they didn't like the road in between Williamsport and Bonifay. We adjusted all three of those things per Vice Mayor's request. We had a community meeting, and we adjusted all three of those things. A large majority of the community did come on and say that they would be okay with this project going there for the sheer fact of the PRD knowing what's going to get put in this place. The, my ask of the council is that we would, and I'm not, y'all obviously all know this, but the people that are okay with this project have lost, it's out of their minds. They're not thinking about it anymore. So they're not going to reach out to you and say, hey, please pass this project. The people that aren't okay with this project are going to still speak up. I have heard from 30 or so people that have all said that we're not on board with this project, but now, when they saw the alternative, said, we are on board with this project. This is a project that we would prefer to see in this space, even though it's not constant. For Smyrna, at a large, I would prefer, for the town that I live in, at a hu, on a global scale for the town, to have more high-end, cut, larger, more beautiful homes than to put more vinyl homes in here. And unfortunately, that is the route that we're going to be going. The homes would be worth $400,000 to $500,000 were we to put them in there. And the reason is because I don't get to provide green space, I don't get to provide playgrounds, walking trails, side, not, obviously, I do sidewalks, but pavilions, grills, all those things I get to do doing this. Density was brought up. As you'll see, the same number of houses, the same number of doors is going to be put here regardless of if we do a PRD or R3. I'll stop blabbering because I'm very passionate. I can go on and on, but I don't want to take up too much of y'all's time. But I would be open to questions. This is something that I've worked with many of y'all on already. It's turned into a big kind of fight that we, I don't think I was expecting, because I thought this was something that we had kind of down-packed, because we worked together on the design of this project. But here we are. So I'm open to any questions or?
Questions or comments, Caleb? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Counsel, we have a denial from the Planning Commission. Do, is there any comments that you want to make before a motion is put on the floor?
Not on that, but on this. If this is 98 single-family R3 lots, I think you're not sweating anymore, if that's what this is. But you have to go, I said, if that were 98 lots, single-family R3, if this is R3, single-family, 98 lots? Is that what, is that what you're telling us this is?
Yes.
Okay. Then I don't think you have a big argument next time you come into Planning Commission with something like that. That's what we're looking for.
Okay. Um, if there are no other comments or questions, then do I have a motion?
I made the motion, Planning Commission, to deny the PRD, and I'll make that motion again tonight. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to deny?
Can you mind putting the basis of the motion?
For the zoning difference? Yeah. For the consistency of zoning.
You good, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
So the motion and a second to deny based on consistency of zoning. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion is denied. We'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28L, Group C, Parcel 16.01, to go from R2 to C1. It's requested by Jeremy Byrd. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately four tenths of an acre and is located at 102 Wright Street. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a rezoning request. It is at 102 Wright Street, about 200 feet west of the intersection with Front Street. Land use plan for this area is the Depot District character area, which would support a mix of uses and services that are more urban in lot sizes and setbacks. Retail, restaurant, office, and attached residential, multifamily residential are particularly appropriate for this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R2 and C1. There is not adequate fire flow at this time, so development of this property is not possible until that fire flow issue is resolved, and that would be regardless of the zoning. The Planning Commission did review this request, did recommend approval. Our staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? I will let you know that I heard from the applicant, and he's not able to be here tonight. He was at another meeting, and, but he did want us to know if we had questions or concerns, he would be happy to answer any of those, so.
I thought he was going to send somebody as a, yeah, or here.
Oh, good. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Comments or questions for Kevin? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Live to approve.
From motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27P, Group B, Parcel 19.00, from R1 to H1 to C4, with H1 requested by Sandra Elias. The property requested to be rezoned contains 32 one-hundredths of an acre and is located at 104 Hazelwood Drive.
Yes, this is on, at 104 Hazelwood Drive. It's about 180 feet, kind of southeast of the intersection with College Street, so it's, its profile's very close to the one you just looked at. Again, this area is part of our Depot District character area, so supports the same type of development as what we looked at on the previous request, certainly. Mix of R1, R, C2, and C4 surrounding this property. This property does lie within the historic overlay district and would remain so if rezoned. There is an existing single-family house currently located on this property. Just as with the previous request, adequate fire flow is not attainable at this time, so development of this property beyond that existing residential use is not possible until, until that fire flow issue is. until that fire flow issue is resolved. And I will remind the council, I think you all are well aware that our utilities department's working through a pretty good list of projects for, to improve fire flow around town, and this is one that is coming, but is not there yet. So we'll have to wait till that project is able to take place. The planning commission did review this request and did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Mark, I think I heard you say on this one that you had called the...
I did, I reached out to the applicant because I wanted to know a little bit more about what their intended use was. It's very similar to what you're seeing up and down that part of Hazelwood right there with the boutiques and the salons and things of that nature. I think the usage here was going to be exactly that. Then I reached out to a neighbor or two in that area too, just to make sure, they were close by the property and they were quite comfortable with it. This is another boutique type of business that they want to do there on Hazelwood, along the Front Street corridor there.
But can't be done until fire flow is...
That's right.
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments?
Does this also have a residential component to it, or it's going to be all C1, they're not living on it?
No, there is a house there on the property that has been, I believe it was a rental, so, and that could certainly continue, and could continue until that power flow issue is resolved and they could change the use.
Okay. Is that the Griffin's old house? Do y'all know?
I guess I want to mention the Griffin's house.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item four, it's consideration of an ordinance amending the PID on property located on tax map 35, parcel 92.02, requested by Sean Saunders. The property requested to be amended contains 3.23 acres and is located at 7085 Florence Road. Kevin?
This is a piece of property, as you stated, 7085 Florence Road, it's about 450 feet north of the intersection with Bridgewater Drive. Land use plan will support medium density, single-family here in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and I2, which is across the street. The approved PID is for six separate mini storage buildings totaling 49,410 square feet. Buildings are required to be constructed with brick, stone, or concrete siding on the ends of the buildings facing Florence Road, and the perimeter walls of the three buildings with support of the residential properties to the sides and rear. The elevation is submitted for the site plan approval, show of brick or stone on the ends of the buildings facing Florence Road with metal on the three perimeter walls, and the planning commission required these walls to be built with masonry. They didn't specify specific material, just that they would be that, one of those three masonry products. The requested amendment is to remove the requirement that the rear elevations of those three buildings, which were the adjacent residential properties, be constructed of the brick, stone, or concrete siding, instead be allowed to be constructed with metal. I included the application and what was submitted for backup materials, as well as the portion of the approved PID, which kind of detailed those material requirements, just so the council had that with you. The planning commission did review this and did recommend denial. There was concern about it because of abutting the residential areas, and so staff would also recommend denial.
Questions for Kevin on this? Mark or Tim, anything you want to add?
Not really, the denial was just simply because we wanted to keep it as it was normally approved. This does have a residential look, appearance side to it as well, and we're just trying to make sure and keep that buffer there. And, you know, back when we did this, it's something we had to discuss, the location, everything anyway, but...
That wasn't too long ago, was it?
Last year.
Yeah.
It was rezoned in 2020.
Okay.
We're approaching three years since the rezoning occurred.
So this is the minehead side?
Yeah. Mr. Saunders at the time brought it in and wanted to build this, and we saw no problem with that. Still don't, but just we wanted to keep the design package the same as what was approved, so.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny? Do you need to add to it? I can already see Jeff squirming.
Because there's been no changes to any of the surrounding zoning, and it was a requirement in the original based upon that, and we'd like to keep that there.
Is it a budget residential?
Correct.
He said it.
That's an attorney for me right there.
Okay, we have a motion to deny based on the fact that it abuts residential. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to deny? Any other discussion? All in favor of denial say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 33, parcel 58.00, to go from R1 to PRD, where it's requested by Clay Wallace. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 23.13 acres and is located on Fortitude Trail. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, this is, Fortitude Trail is a road that kind of, it runs kind of west of Green Tree Drive and east of Montgomery Way. It's in that area there in between those two developments. The land use plan will support medium density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and PRD, and those PRDs are Woodmont and the Colony at Green Tree PRD. This proposed PRD is for 70 single-family lots. Access would be from Fortitude Trail, as well as a proposed stub to a future section of Woodmont. The houses would have a front setback of 20 feet, but the garages would be at least 35. The water lines within this development will have to connect to the main, the water main, is Skinner Drive, in order to receive adequate fire flow, so they'll have to be a little bit of cross-country water line extension. The layout does propose a connection to a street in Woodmont, which has been approved on the preliminary plat as a cul-de-sac. I have had some discussions with those, representation of that developer about making that, changing that, so I think that would, when that plat comes in, we'll have to make sure that connection happens. Because the planning commission did recommend approval with the connection, with the requirement that that proposed sub-street, which would be to the south, would be, that road would be connected for about a second way in and out for these 70 lines. And with that, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Okay, Mark or Tim, anything to add?
Zoning is consistent with surrounding zoning. I think the major issue that we heard last time at council was having more than one access that's going to be achieved now and as part of the approval to include that. So I think those questions have been answered and we're ready to move forward on this.
We did make that subject to that second access, yeah.
Okay, anything else from counsel?
I do have a question. Is this the one where you had reached out to the neighboring developer, and at the time you hadn't heard back? Have you heard back?
I have not. I think they're kind of waiting to see what happens here, quite frankly.
Okay.
Basically, I don't know that, I just, that's my, what I think happened.
Your feeling?
Yeah.
You're good? Okay.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will now move on to item B, which is our package liquor board report. There were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C is consideration and approval of a resolution to accept two surplus microwave antennas from the Rutherford County Emergency Management Services. Who's taking?
I can take that.
Jeff, you taking this?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, as we discussed at workshop, this is a resolution that's required by TCA for the town to receive donations from Rutherford County of two microwave antennas for the police department.
Questions for Jeff? We sure appreciate the...
It was nice of them.
Working hand in hand with other jurisdictions, and this sure will be a benefit to us. So do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Under other, I know you all don't keep the Facebook pulled up, but we had a question that was asked under other, was why can't the city force the developer to open the road on what the citizens had come for asking us initially? And Jeff, can you talk a little bit about the development and the way the plats have been brought in? And I know they were told when the project was finished, but I guess technically with the way they brought it in, the project is not totally finished.
Well, historically, Kevin may be able to talk a little bit more intelligently than I on it, but basically my understanding is there's only been a preliminary plat that was filed, and if you notice these things that were here, you've got just one lot that had a final plat, and the rest of it was the master plan and those types of things. So my understanding is there's not been a final plat for that area, and that's when we would require a bond.
Kevin, who's that? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's right. Again, it's been something that's been planned with that development from the very beginning, that that road would tie into Ena Springs Road, which has always been the developers would be doing that. And it is something that we typically require a bond when a plat gets recorded. And we look at it...
But the plat for that phase has not been recorded is the problem.
Has never been recorded, yeah.
Right.
Was there a master plat recorded?
The master, the way, all of the, all of the developed area has been recorded, but that area where, that land that's between the developed portion of Hidden Hills, Ena Springs Road, and then there's property on the other side as well, that has never had a plat. There was a preliminary plat that would extend St. Francis Avenue, that did come in, that got approved by planning commission over a year ago. And so we assume they're going to start building the road now, and so it's...
All of a sudden, the developer just stopped bringing the rest of the...
Which they can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they don't, well, obviously, we can't force someone...
They're not out, they are not out of compliance by doing it that way, and that's...
Right, and we can't force someone to develop the property, so, I mean, we can't.
And I guess what I'm trying to show is we have tried to come up with every option that we can come up with to get the developer to go ahead and finish the road, and our hands are tied.
Right.
So, okay.
So, Kevin, I guess I don't know that you saw this map, but one of the maps that was provided to us by, I think, one of the ladies that spoke, it shows in a dark line the section that you're saying has never had a, anything but a preliminary plat filed.
Correct, right.
So that, essentially, they haven't told us how they want to develop that property.
Well, they told us, and it was basically just a straight line from the end of St. Francis to the, to Ena Springs. It's a pretty simple from the design standpoint, but for the road.
Yeah, for the road portion, but not the rest of the property.
But not the rest of the property, correct.
Right.
You know, and we have not seen any type of development plan for the rest of that property at all, other than that preliminary plat, which was just for the road itself.
Is that the only part of that development that's undone?
As far as any public infrastructure, yes.
Okay, thank you for, I just wanted to make sure we answered the question of the person watching on TV. Okay, anything under other tonight?
Come here.
Okay. Rex?
Good day.
Happy New Year. How are you?
Mayor and counsel? November state shared tax, we received $708,770. For our November local sales tax, we received $1,652,887, and our sales tax collections remained strong.
Looking at those, it was, citizens are doing good on shopping local.
Yeah.
Questions or comments? Okay, thanks Rex. Directors or department heads, anything tonight that needs to come before counsel? Amber Lou?
Yeah, ma'am, Happy New Year.
Brian D.
Mayor and counsel, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share with you. I learned today, unfortunately, that Randy Roberts, one of our utility employees, mother passed away this past weekend, so we want to share condolences and best wishes for that family, and we'll keep them in our prayers. It's been a while since we met. We had the Christmas break and the New Year break, and I think we garnered very well, other than during Christmas, we had some uncommonly cold weather that created many problems. And I just want to say thank you to the streets department for the snow and ice removal and all the work they did to keep our streets safe. Also, many of you don't understand that when we get those kind of cold blasts, we have a lot of things in the utility business that creates issues for us, gas pressures, water lines, and things like that. Our utilities department did a great job, also included support to our friends in Laverne. Some of you may have heard over the news media that they had some issues with water pressure. We were able to backflow some water to them for a few days to keep them whole, and I appreciate all the work that was done by our utility folks to make that happen. The other thing that happened during that time, there was some rolling blackouts with TBA that we all were involved with, and spent the good part of a Saturday all day long on the telephone with our friends at Middle Tennessee Electric and our...
Did you have any warning that that was going to happen?
That's conversations that we're having to make sure that we, going forward, make sure we're communicating. And that's one of the things that I shared with the group as we talk. You know, our PIO was on scene from the standpoint of getting information out. That's the one part that I wish we could have had a better communication line, and that's being looked at, so.
Yeah, I can tell you that if you were signed up for email notifications from Middle Tennessee Electric, I did get an email that morning, or maybe the night before, stating that they were going to be happening, but it was less than 24-hour notice, but I did get an email notification.
Well, and I think Middle Tennessee Electric, they, they were trying to do a good job, but, you know, actually the problems were not on their side. It was more with TBA and some generation issues that they had, some equipment down and those kind of things. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, but Middle Tennessee Electric was doing everything they could to keep power whole. Unfortunately, they got to a point where they had to go to the rolling blackouts, because I think there was other utilities that were actually doing rolling blackouts a day before we actually incurred some of them. But anyway, I just, I want you to know that there was a lot of people working a lot of hours to make, make sure everything worked well. Got a couple of notes that I wanted to share with you. One was on, one of the people from the gas department, Derek, during the rolling blackouts and some of the things that were happening, he got a call on Christmas Day, and he went out to the customer's house, and the customer took the time to write a note of appreciation for his professionalism and how he dealt with them, and helped them get ahold of their HVAC person to get them out and help them a little bit. Also, we had another, this one was for the water department, and this was a person that had some issues with their water, and he couldn't remember the person's name that actually came out, but he talked to Teresa in the billing department, utilities area, and just, he said, I want to preface that I'm not a guy that normally makes these kind of comments. So whatever we did struck high enough on the note for him to take the time to write the email and share with us the appreciation he had for the work that we did. Also, Chief Urban shared with me, and this is one of those that sometimes, you know, we forget about the work that our officers do and the detail of some of this work, and I won't get into the issues, other than this was a felony child abuse and attempted homicide that Metro Nashville got involved, and they just wanted to express appreciation to Lieutenant Duke, Detective Killful, Schaefer, Rowlett, and Officer Washire for the work that they did to help apprehend the person that they were chasing on these charges, and hopefully justice will be served. Just real quickly, I've got a couple of slides that'll come up. Just want to remind everyone that the Christmas tree dropped off at Lee Victory Park, 100 Sam Really Parkway next to the football field parking lot, goes through the 15th of this month, so if you're still in the business of taking down a Christmas tree and you need someplace to take it, we will be collecting those and then moving them over for mulching purposes at the county. So if you need someplace to drop off your Christmas tree beside the side of the road, please bring them out to Lee Victory Park. Next I have, I wanted to say thank you to our police officers and our FOP officers. Shop with a cop, I had the opportunity to go by there. I know I see the chief... I know I see the chief and several of our officers involved. It was a great morning to be out and watch the kiddos as they made their way through our friends at Walmart and pick up toys, clothes, and it's always interesting to watch these children who could be very selfish in what they're buying for, but many times they're, they're looking out for their full family, and they have a limited resource of what we provide them to buy Christmas, but they make it happen. And thank you to our police officers and the work that they do. Speaking of that, yesterday, January the ninth, in the town of Smyrna and all across the nation, was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I know that we put several posts on Facebook, Twitter, and our different social medias. I think we had it on Channel Three, but I just want to personally say thank you to our police department. I promise you, we've got a very dedicated group down there, and they work very hard to keep us safe and to provide the services. And so Chief, Officer Lindsay back there, we appreciate you and everybody else in the department. Thank you for what you do. Next Monday, January the sixteenth, is Martin Luther King Day. I just want to remind everyone that the town hall offices and the, and most of the city, or town services will be closed for the observance of Martin Luther King Day, but I always like to remind people that our police, our fire, the golf course, parks, wastewater, water department, and the gas department will still be working. We provide services around the clock, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So those that'll enjoy the day off, just want people to know the offices will be closed, but thank you to those that'll continue to provide those services. Saturday, I had a opportunity to be with our newest Boy Scout troop, which was made up of all girls. They removed their Wee-Below scarves and became full-fledged Boy Scouts. It was a great event, a lot of fun to have. Our friends at Carpe Artista are sponsoring Troop One-Sixty-Seven with Jennifer Block, who's been here, I think the girls were here a couple of weeks ago and did our pledge. They were Wee-Belows at the time, but now they're Full-Fledged Boy Scouts of America, and it was a lot of fun to be there and be part of that ceremony. I want to share the last thing I've got, and I typically end my time with the council on this, is love where you live. And, you know, the state has now come out with Nobody Trashes Tennessee, and they've got a litter hotline, one-eight-seven-seven-eight-litter. If you see someone littering or some, you know, business that is littering, you can call that number and report that. Now, we think about litter just from the aesthetics, and I talk about that many times, about, you know, take some pride in our community, you know, be, be mindful of taking your trash to, you know, a receptacle at a service station or at your home and those kind of things. I had the opportunity this week to have a conversation with one of our citizens who was experiencing some flooding. When we got into it, we found were some trash that has washed through the system in our storm drain system, and it clogged up storm drains. That's another issue with, with litter, is it creates some other problems for the town and for our citizens. So not only from the aesthetic standpoint of making our community beautiful, but also respecting our streams and respecting our stormwater system, it's important that we all recognize litter as an issue. So with that, Mayor, I will stop. Thank you.
Jeffrey L.
Nothing to me, Mayor.
Rockell?
Happy New Year to everyone. Condolences to those in the Smyrna family who have lost loved ones, and I have, one of my kiddos is celebrating a birthday in seven days, so I'm going to tell them happy early birthday on the seventeenth of this month. And that's all I have.
Great. H.C.
In this new year, be kind to your local merchants and shop local. That's all I have.
I'll extend my well wishes for the new year to everyone as well. Chief, thank you for what your officers do, and, you know, it's, you can't put into words how important law enforcement is to the community, so thank you and glad we recognized you on Monday. And that is it.
Sharon?
First of all, those that get to be off on Monday, I hope you have a happy Martin Luther King Day and enjoy the day, and for those that have to work, we thank you for your willingness to do that. Over the weekend, I lost a first cousin, Larry Short, and so just want to send out thoughts and prayers to my, his wife Carol and the kids. And Larry lived here in Smyrna pretty much all his adult life, and lived out towards Walter Hill area when he was growing up. So just condolences to Larry and Carol, the family there and the kids, so. And also, my son Tyler has a birthday on Sunday, so happy birthday to Tyler. That's it.
Steve?
Thank you, Chief, and to all the police officers, all the work that you guys do. One day doesn't really seem like enough, or even one month, right? So you guys are underpaid and overworked, and we recognize that and we appreciate everything you're doing. I would like to, on a personal note, wish my parents a happy anniversary. Their anniversary's coming up in the next week. Fifty-something, or maybe forty-nine, I'm not sure. They're right at fifty, so. They still like to be together and spend time together, so that says something, right? Or at least, that's what my mom says. I don't know about my dad, but he's kind of hard to read. But also, happy new year to everybody. Enjoy, enjoy the holiday that's coming up, if you get the day off, and look forward to 2023.
Enjoy the holiday either way.
Yeah.
Whether you're working or not, happy Martin Luther King Day to you. Rex, thank you again for you and your team back there in the finance department, getting through another audit and making the town come out well, watching the money, writing the checks. You guys do a good job back there. To Randy Roberts' mother, Marilyn Hilton, I think was her name, we give condolences to Randy and his family. And also to Larry Short's loss, Jerry mentioned it, I know Carol and Larry, and so I just wanted to give my condolences there. Chief, I think everybody's taking their turn to say thank you to our law enforcement. It's like, like was mentioned, it's not, one day's not enough. It's hard these days to keep a police force hired. It's just a different climate, it's difficult, but you guys are doing a good job. I know you've been on the job now a few months, couple of months, whatever, and you're being baptized by fire with your entire staff over there, but can't tell we've missed a beat, and we appreciate you and all your patrol people. And we have a slide, I think, yeah. So Blue Angel Number Seven was in town not too awfully long ago to do a planning, a pre-planning visit for the airshow, which will be here June tenth and June eleventh, and you can see that gnarly group right there that attended was myself, council members H.G. Cole, Steve Sullivan, and Jerry Short, and of course, our town manager Brian Hercules was in the crowd there, Assistant Town Manager Todd Spearman, and our ever-beloved Jeffrey Esquire Peach was there, and County Commissioner Phil Wilson was also in the picture. And I think I heard somebody say they're flying the supersonic jet this time, and which probably adds speed and agility, so should be a good show. Looking forward to having that in the spring of this year.
Got a text before they came in about how excited they were, just about the visit, but they are super excited to be back, that Smyrna holds a really close place in their hearts, so as excited as we are to have them, I think they're excited to be back, too.
That's all it is. That's it. Okay, a couple of items. Chief, the Smyrna Police Department 2022 stats. The officers at the Smyrna Police Department were able to help reduce the total number of crashes in the town by fifty-two in 2022. There were forty-nine fewer property damage crashes on the roadway. Officers responded to six-hundred-and-forty-three private property crashes in parking lots, and I'm sure most of those were male drivers, but we won't talk about that. Smyrna officers made more than ten thousand traffic stops and issued more than nine thousand citations, so thank you to our police department for continuing to protect and serve our community. We appreciate you guys. Not to leave out our fire department. The Smyrna Fire Department was recently rated by the Insurance Service Office. The ISO determines the insurance rate for the town of Smyrna residents and businesses, and the fire department maintained our ISO three class rating. The ISO rating is determined by three components: emergency communication, fire department, and water supply. So thank you to our fire department dispatchers and Smyrna Utilities for helping to keep us safe and maintain our ratings. So Chief, we appreciate you and everybody in your department for what you do. You know, I think it's pretty important when you are in an emergency situation, you have to dial nine-one-one, to know that there's going to be somebody on the other end of that phone that answers that phone call or shows up at your house that's going to help you in a time of need, and we as a council can't tell you how appreciative we are of your departments, but also when there's somebody that has to go out on Christmas Day to help somebody in our community. We have people that love their job here in the town of Smyrna, and we appreciate the team that we work with day in and day out. Happy New Year to everybody. I think the New Year's gotten started off right, and we are excited about things that are upcoming here in the town of Smyrna. Brian and the department heads have already gotten started on budget for next year. We'll be doing retreat in a couple of months, and we've got exciting things happening here in the community, and I think we're all blessed to live here. So if there is nothing else, counsel, anybody, then we are adjourned.